Good morning again, everybody. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council Chambers, and welcome to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, September 8th, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Members, it is 10:20 a.m., and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum, but we do have a couple of special presentations and introductions to be made today. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Perry.
Stand next to me. Don't be shy. Come stand next to me.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and it is a real pleasure to welcome the Commercial Council General of Spain here today, Antonio Estevez. Last Saturday, September 4th, marked the 223rd birthday of the city of Los Angeles. This city is much older than most people know. It is older than all but eight of the 21 missions. Los Angeles is one of only two cities in Alta, California, founded by an order of the King of Spain, Don Carlos III. The city owes its existence to the need for additional food at the missions and at the procedios. This need caused the city to be founded as an agricultural center. Today, I am presenting a resolution on behalf of the entire City Council, City Controller, the City Attorney, that is a recreation of one of the founding documents of the city of Los Angeles, and you'll see the image here when we hold it up. This document was obtained from the General Archive of the Indies of Spain. The document is dated 1780 and talks about founding a town on the Rio Por Ciancola, and founding two additional missions at Ventura and Santa Barbara. On our 223rd birthday, it seems only appropriate that we reflect on the city's origins. It is important to recognize that the city of Los Angeles owes its existence to Spain and to her explorers and her priests. These people came to document a place that was unknown, and to report back to Spain what they found, and it was through this reporting process the city of Los Angeles was brought to life. So it is a pleasure to present this resolution, signed by our entire city family, as documentation of our city's great history, and I would like to ask Council General if he would like to say a few words.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank the city of Los Angeles for giving me the honor and the privilege to be here today, witnessing this act and this ceremony, presentation of this document, that acknowledging the origins of the city of Los Angeles. It's very satisfying also for me to witness this fruitful collaboration between the Archivo General de Indias and the City Hall of Los Angeles. Thank you again to everybody. Thank you.
And just so that you can see this on camera, I'm not sure if you can pick that up, but it's a very, very nice rendering of this original document dated 1780.
Mr. Reyes?
I just wanted to take a moment to thank Councilmember Perry and our honored guest. Many times in our communities, because of our diversity, we don't understand the history, the long and rich history we have here in Los Angeles. Just the other day, I was reading about the one summer day in the 1700s, and how this area looked, and what's interesting is the dominant language then was French and Spanish. Spanish was the language of business. The French were dealing with a lot of restaurants and grapevines, and agriculture was emerging. And for our young people to understand how rich this country is, knowing all of the culture and language, the richness from Spain and Mexico is important, and I'm glad Jan is able to share that history, because many of our young people aren't aware of that. It's like the period started when we just started with an English-speaking society, and what's great is that English is the language of America, and actually it's now the language of business internationally, but the bottom line is, we are rich with history, and it's these kinds of events and moments that we can acknowledge for all the young people, the greatness of our communities. It's not just about gang signs and gang streets and territorialism over a piece of land that makes no sense. There's a lot more riches in our city, and there's a lot more to live for. So I want to thank you, Jan, and this as a reminder, and our special guest. Thank you so much.
Mr. Labance?
Thank you for your interpretation of that quickly, Jan, on that. God bless Spain and all the work Spain did, and our great seal of the city of Los Angeles, as you know, probably the most recognized seal in the world, because of all the movies they made about Los Angeles and the Los Angeles Police Department, has the crest of Spain, of when Spain and their history, as Ed Reyes spoke of, the history of our people, of our founding, was here in Los Angeles. So I thank Spain always, and the connection, and thank Jan Perry for the connection that you did, and what a beautiful job our calligraphers did. Is that there again? Hold it up again for the TV. Do we still have it up there, Mr. Fisher? That's such a beautiful job to show the history of that, and what's amazing, when you do go to our archives here over in Piper Technical Center, you can find documents, original documents similar to that. What a great job. Congratulations. Thank you for coming down and wishing us a happy, happy birthday. Thank you, Jan Perry.
Thank you.
For our next presentation, let me recognize Mr. Zine.
I have one more. Okay, and I'd like to call Ms. Han and... And I'd like to call Ms. Han and Mr. Padilla, and I think Mr. Ludlow will be joining us temporarily, and Ms. Gruel. Pink is a good color for you.
It's better.
It's blowing the camera out.
It will wash down.
Okay, now. Does everybody want to, how do you do this? Everybody want to get up?
Yeah.
All right, everybody just come, everybody get up. Okay, and then just sort of fold around us. Yeah, you want to come up to the podium? Come on up. Okay. All righty. Okay, thank you, Mr. Padilla. Here, let's, let's. Great. Okay, we got a, we got a real big crowd up here, but this is good. It's a pleasure to stand here today with the representatives of the Los Angeles Black Business Expo and Trade Show. This year, the 16th Annual Black Business Expo will take place on September 10th, 11th, and 12th at the Los Angeles Convention Center in the Tom Bradley Hall. The Expo and Trade Show began in 1998 as a means to provide exposure to and empower otherwise obscure black-owned businesses so that they can grow, get more exposure, and hire people from the community. The mission of this group is to support the development and growth of African-American business enterprises. Approximately 39,000 businesses in the Los Angeles metropolitan area with revenue of over $4.5 billion through business promotions, consumer education, training, and financing. Over 500 corporate and small businesses from Los Angeles will exhibit products and services to over 70,000 attendees. Each day will emphasize a different theme. Friday, the 10th, celebrates businesses and youth. Saturday, the 11th, celebrates women and families. September the 12th celebrates churches and their contributions. The sponsors are many, and just to name a few, we have Farmers Insurance, our city of Los Angeles, Lowry's, Citibank, One United Bank, Wells Fargo, Washington Mutual, the Cerritos Center, Union Bank, Southwest Airlines, Wilshire Works Source, KJHL, The Beat, LA Watts Times, The Sentinel, The Wave, The Los Angeles Weekly, and many other supporters. This is an incredible event that celebrates the diversity and strength of our business community here in our city, and I encourage everyone to come down to the convention center this weekend and take part in what is certain to be an exciting opportunity. So it's an honor to ask Mr. Harold Hambrik to speak, but before he does, I want to ask each one of my colleagues to say a few words about the Black Business Expo and to offer their congratulations. And I think I'd like to start with our council president, Mr. Alex Padilla.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry. I won't be too repetitive, because I think she said it all, but let me just offer this to people in the audience and people watching from home. This is exactly what we mean when we talk about reinvesting in our own community. We've been talking for years about a spreader economy, we've been talking for years about budget challenges at the local and state level. The best way to strengthen our local economy is to strengthen the businesses that have already invested here by spending our own dollars here. And this expo will allow consumers to come and be more informed as to the wonderful opportunities brought to us by black business owners throughout the Los Angeles area, and it's also going to allow businesses, large and small, the opportunity to reinvest with each other. And I think this expo and trade show is yet another highlight of what it is to live in Los Angeles and to embrace the diverse cultures and the diverse economic opportunities throughout Los Angeles, and it's my honor to be a part of it. Thank you, Councilmember Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry, Mr. Padilla, and Councilmember Han, and many of the businesses behind us today. This expo, as Mr. Padilla said, is an opportunity for us to support businesses that are located here in Los Angeles. These businesses are the heart and soul of our community. Small and medium-sized businesses make up the, you know, numbers and the majority of businesses that are here in the city of Los Angeles. And these business owners behind us have been ones that have invested in our community, invested in those neighborhoods, and invested in the city of Los Angeles. And as we are looking forward to business tax reform, which I know you all will be very supportive of in the city of Los Angeles, to say that we are open for business, that we care about businesses that are located in the city of Los Angeles, we want you, we want to keep you here, and so we're going to make it easier to do business in the city of Los Angeles with your help and support. But this expo is exactly what we stand for in the city of Los Angeles, which is to support those businesses. We encourage those of you that are watching to go to the convention center. If you don't have something to do, if you have something to do, rearrange your schedule. Make sure you come and enjoy this extraordinary expo and its 16th year. It's an event not to miss. So congratulations to those of you who have made this a reality, and to Councilmember Perry for acknowledging them today and ensuring that this is a successful event in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Councilwoman Perry and my council colleagues for letting us have this opportunity to highlight and congratulate all those who are involved with the 16th Annual Los Angeles Black Business Expo and Trades Show here. And this is a great opportunity to highlight the fact that we have 39,000 African-American-owned businesses in Los Angeles who have revenues of over $4.5 billion. It's clear that these businesses have been successful, but we have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work to do, and this kind of exposure is important to make sure that these businesses continue to have more opportunities to succeed and provide good-paying jobs for people in the city of Los Angeles. I'm the councilwoman that represents support of Los Angeles in my council district, and one thing I'm well aware of is that the international trade industry is booming. The international trade industry is projected to grow, to triple in growth in 20 years, just with containers coming in through Los Angeles and Long Beach. And one of the things I'm pleased to see this year as the Black Business Expo is incorporating a number of sessions dealing with international trade, particularly in Africa and Uganda. And, you know, even in the toughest economic times, even sometimes in this own country when we've seen a slowing of businesses, the international trade industry never slows down, it never diminishes, and that's why I'm pleased to see this highlight at this year's expo. I want to see more black-owned businesses, more minority businesses, more black-owned women businesses getting on the international trade bandwagon, because I think that's the future, and that's where I think many businesses will be successful. And it's unfortunate that even here in Los Angeles, many of our businesses still aren't connected to that industry. So hopefully, this will put a lot of businesses on that trail of economic success. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you, Jan Perry, for letting us all be able to highlight this, this great event.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ludlow would like to come and say a few words. Want to say a few words? Can you come up here?
I'll say a word. First of all, Councilmember Perry, thank you for recognizing the expo today and for all of the leaders who have made this one of the most exceptional expositions and trade shows that the city of L.A. ever puts on. This is going to be an important year. There's been a lot of talk around the country, around the economy, and there's been a lot of discussion from municipalities, what we can do to reach out, to ensure that people of color and women are getting opportunities to do contracting. And I think this year, there are a number of workshops and a number of venues that you've put together that I think really speak to that, and so I just want to join in with Councilmember Perry and the other members that are up there to congratulate you. It's a tough job, it's a lot of work, and you've done it successfully year after year. So thank you so much for being here. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you very much. And before Harold speaks, I wanted to recognize the number of business owners here with us. Tony Thomas from Cormier Chevrolet, Ken Adams from Farmers Insurance, Catherine Edwards, L.A. Tech Connect, Peggy Toy, L.A. Tech Connections, James Jacobs, Superior Carpet, Michael Seal, President of Entrepreneurs Tomorrow, Myra Wallace, Fashion Director, Derek Angus, Derek's Jamaican, and the L.A. Black Restaurant Association, Muriel Jones from Shabazz Seafood Restaurant and Bakery, Alonzo Williams, Club Hall of Fame, and James Ship, USA Marketing Services. And now I'd like to ask Mr. Harold Hambrik, who is the founder of this expo, to come and say a few words.
Just a correction. Barbara Lindsey is the founder of the L.A. Black Business Expo and Trade Show. It was founded, that worked, it was founded in 1988 at LAX Marriott with 50 exhibitors, and today we stand here proudly and say that we expect to have over 500 exhibitors. I would just like to say in my brief remarks, to the mayor of Los Angeles, James Horn, to President Padilla, the members of the city council, in particular Councilwoman Jan Perry, it is in the spirit of the 44 settlers, which included 26 black settlers with Spanish surnames who settled in El Pepló de Los Angeles in 1781. It is in the spirit of Billy Mason, a farmer slave who owned land in downtown Los Angeles, not too far from City Hall, an entrepreneur. It is in the spirit of Booker T. Washington, who in 1895 addressed the Cotton State Exposition in Atlanta after petitioning that body to allow black businesses to be represented in that what we call our first black exposition. It is in the spirit of Leslie Shaw, the first black postmaster of Los Angeles. It is in the spirit of Gilbert Lindsey, the first black elected to this council. And it is in the spirit of one Tom Bradley, mayor emeritus, that we stand before you and say thanks for the recognizing, recognition given to black businesses in the city of Los Angeles, which numbers some 40,000. Our history in Los Angeles is long and rich. We appreciate your support. We invite you to stop by the convention center Friday, Saturday, and Sunday and have the black business experience of your lifetime. I might also say that we brought a little of what we call Taste in Black L.A. to the press room, so the council was invited to get a taste of Black L.A. Thank you very much. From Shabazz Restaurant, Muriel Jones, right at La Murde, and Martin Luther King Boulevard. She's standing in the background. She's a little camera shy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry, and to all the leaders who are here for, best wishes for a great conference this weekend. Members, I'd also like to introduce, we have some students visiting from Taiwan. They are political science college students, 13 of them. They are here to watch us today. They are accompanied by Jimmy Liao of the Planning Department. Would they please stand and be recognized? Welcome to the city of L.A. Thank you. We have another presentation and introduction at this time. If I can recognize Councilmember Dennis Zine.
We're trying to question, which photographer's a professional? Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. It's my pleasure to welcome to our fine city two individuals from a cable operator from Korea, and we have welcoming certificates. Also joining us, Dean Leavenworth from Time Warner, who's a wonderful ambassador for the cable industry, and he's brought to council today two individuals, David O.S. Yun, Business Development, CNM Communications. David, for your appearance here, for welcoming to Los Angeles, and Man Won Kim, Manager and Digital Business Team, CNM Communications, and we welcome you to Los Angeles, and they're here to learn about our digital cable operation in the city of Los Angeles, and Dean Leavenworth from Time Warner is helping them do that, and we wanted to take a moment to introduce them, and if you have a couple of words to say?
Sure.
Here you go.
As we were introduced, we're cable operators in Korea, and we're fortunate enough to have the assistance and cooperation of Mr. Leavenworth here from Time Warner Cable here in L.A. We feel that Time Warner is a very well-run media company, and especially cable company, so we have a lot to learn about cable operations, especially from the business models here in the U.S. And I feel that Time Warner is a great company who is efficiently run and well-run, so we're hoping to learn some things from them. And they've been very cooperative. They visited us in Korea and explained the cable business to us and how the U.S. environment is about media business and things like that. And we're very fortunate to have a friend like Mr. Leavenworth and Time Warner here, who has been very helpful in helping us to assist with our business and how to learn different facets of the business and share their experiences with us. So we're very appreciative of that, and of course, Councilman here is also very helpful in explaining about the workings of Los Angeles and things like that, so we're very grateful to Los Angeles and Time Warner and Mr. Leavenworth and the councilmen here. Thank you.
And we're now being viewed live on cable television here in Los Angeles. Did you have anything to say? Okay, that's, thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the introduction, Mr. Zine. I believe Mr. Labange has our presentation today.
Madam President and members, it happened so fast. It happened so fast, and it took so long to get back home, but this morning, we're here to celebrate the great success that our sister city of Athens, Greece, had, and the great Olympiad just held in Athens. And with us this morning is our honorable Council General, Demetrius Zavalakis, who is here to accept our warm feelings about the great job the Greeks did. And having been laid up a little bit, as you know, from a little injury, I watched a lot of those Olympic Games, and I was so impressed with all the work. But truthfully, when I first started watching him, all the American announcers were talking about his security and costs and overruns, and will anyone, will Greek, will the Greeks be able to do it? But very quickly, all that discussion was erased, and they talked about the athletes and the great struggles of people from throughout the world who came to the Athens Games and to compete. More people competed in the Athens Olympics than any time in our history. More women competed in any time in the history of the athletic movement, in the history of the Olympic Games. These games were said to be some of the greatest ever for the impression that was made and all the excitement. And wasn't it terrible that the only little hiccup you had is some crazy Irishman ran on the marathon course and tried to take out that great Brazilian, who came back to finish. He won, he won, he won the great award of sportsmanship on that. Four billion people throughout the country watched these games, and which was so important to see that. And you all may remember that earlier this summer, the Olympic flame came to Los Angeles, came to North America on its round trip to be in every continent in the world as the Greek Olympic Committee shared its torch from throughout the world in visiting Olympic cities such as Los Angeles. It ran from Venice Beach all the way through the city to a great celebration in Dodger Stadium on that very nice evening. So we wanted to officially, as a city council, congratulate the Greeks for their great job in the Olympic Games and the inspiration of your mayor, and also your wonderful director of the Olympic Games, who has such a wonderful name, and that I don't want to drop like a hurdler did.
John Angelopoulos.
John Angelopoulos, did an absolutely wonderful job, who was the head of the Olympic movement in Athens and was replaced mid-time, stalled, and then she came back into the picture, and she brought it all together in absolutely a beautiful time. I only wish I could do an instant poll now to see how many people enjoyed and loved the Olympic Games at Athens. It's so, it was such a great moment. It was a great moment in our life of a city 20 years ago in 1984, but it was a great moment in the life of the Greeks and the life of the great city of Athens. So on behalf of all council members, to this great Council General, we want to salute you and present this document to you and ask you
A very, very warm thank you very much to the president and the members of the city council of Los Angeles, to councilmember Labonge for these kind words. Upon leaving for Athens to watch the Olympics, many Angelino friends of mine said that this was going to be an experience I would never forget. And of course, they had in mind the '84 Olympics. And indeed, it was. And the way I see it, it was just another link between the two cities. We now, Athens and Los Angeles, are two of the very, very few cities around the world that have been twice Olympic cities. And of course, the Olympic torch relay, which happened here on June 16th, was one of the very, very strongest links of the, of these two cities. And of course, it went all through all the continents for the first time, as it was mentioned, before it went back to Greece. Another similarity between the two cities, Athens and L.A., of course, is the challenges that we face all the time concerning the local surroundings and more specifically, traffic congestion. So as you can think, this was a lesson also that we learned from the '84 Olympics here on how to run an Olympic city in a smooth way, as everybody saw, without having any problems. And of course, to that effect, for those of you who have visited Athens before and who will visit in the future, you will see it's a completely new city. It's a city which has a new subway that takes people from the new airport to downtown. It has a new suburban railway. It has new streets in the middle of the city which unify the archaeological sites. And of course, one other major issue that luckily wasn't faced by the Los Angeles '84 Olympics and we had to face in a post-9/11 world was the issue of security. And indeed, we faced this issue very, very seriously. We had a very close cooperation with the United States and other allied countries, with NATO, with our European Union allies. And of course, we broke another record. Councilman Labonge mentioned record numbers of athletes that we had in Athens, more than ever before, countries in Athens that we had more than ever before. But of course, there's also another record in the amount that we invested for security, and that exceeded $1.2 billion. Of course, the result, as everybody saw, was worth it. So we're happy that we were able to provide a safe, pleasant, and hospitable environment because the meaning of the Olympics is the meaning of running such a huge and successful city as Los Angeles is, to have people from all walks of life, from all ethnic backgrounds, from all geographical areas around the world, being together, working together. And this is why I think we have another very, very strong bond between the city of Los Angeles and the city of Athens. These are two cities that very sternly believe in the Olympic ideals. And these are to learn each other through noble competition and sport and striving for excellence. And through knowing each other, we become friends. And through being friends, we realize that we have more things that unite us than those things that separate us. So again, thank you very much for this great honor. And the city of Athens is looking forward to having more close cooperation with the city, the sister city of Los Angeles, in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations for great games. And thank you, Mr. Labonge, Mr. Olympics here in L.A. We have our final presentation that is going to be done by Ms. Perry, who is doing it on behalf of Councilmember Parks.
You got some? No, I need some. Kind of like caught off guard.
Yeah.
Because he wasn't expecting you today, so I don't have any briefing notes from him.
These are the board members that are here. Michelle Smith Ballard and Angela Redock, two of the board members in Marketplace. Colferick Park and Representative Margie Reese and myself.
Yeah, and where's Margie? Is Margie here?
Yeah, Margie's here.
Okay, Margie, come on.
And then there's some accomplishments.
Okay.
Top 100 events in North America, creating a national association with 55 countries, creation of a global seminar of religion initiative.
Okay. I might let you read this because I can't read your writing. Okay. Thank you very much, and I am pleased to cover for Mr. Parks today. He had a conflict this morning. I have with me Mr. James Burke, who is the founder of the African Marketplace, Margie Reese, the general manager of the Cultural Affairs Department, Angela Redock, who is an attorney and I believe a city commissioner, and Marva Smith Beland, who is a board member of the African American Marketplace. I'm going to ask Mr. Burke to recognize anyone whom I have overlooked. The African Marketplace is a nonprofit cultural organization and is the umbrella organization for the Los Angeles Marketplace and Cultural Fair and the African American Tourism and Hospitality Council of Greater Los Angeles. And its board consists of prominent civic leaders throughout Southern California, representing the areas of corporate, business, political, nonprofit, arts, and entertainment communities. The goal of the marketplace is to promote understanding and appreciation of the global influence of the African diaspora. Africa's impact stretches around the world, from the continent of Europe, the Caribbean, South America, North America, the Pacific Rim, and Asia. The music, the mission is to embrace a concept of a global village and unite all of our populations as a world population together. And so I know that Mr. Parks would appreciate your support and recognition of this just amazing annual gathering. Each year, it gets bigger and even more interesting and more diverse, and it's just a real pleasure to spend time there. I had a booth this year, and I intend to continue to do that every year because it's just fun to be able to participate and watch the entire world go by. And I'd like to ask Mr. Burke to come up here and say a few words and interpret his notes. And Ms. Reese as well, from Cultural Affairs.
Thank you, Councilwoman Perry. Thank you also, city council. You know, for years, we've come before you and talked about the development of cultural relationships based on similarities as opposed to differences. And the one good thing about the African Marketplace is we've been able to embrace so many cultures through this event, looking at the African diaspora in terms of the influence of African culture worldwide. There are a number of things that have been accomplished by this small organization, and I'll talk about them in a moment. But again, I want to introduce some of the people who have been very, very important to this process. Michelle Smith Ballard, who's on the board, who's also with AEG and has been very helpful over the years. Attorney Angela Redock, who also has been on our board. But some things that people don't know, we also have a homeless soccer tournament with the Marketplace and a Nations Cup tennis tournament that we're turning into one of the world's most premier tennis tournaments. And I want to introduce Ronita Elder here, who's been the director of that for the last 10 years. This year, we moved the tennis tournament to the Home Depot Center. I think she had about 159 participants in that tennis tournament. Hopefully, we will create another event that's a tourist destination. The African Marketplace was developed to become a tourist destination. Tourism is one of the top economy, economic centers in the United States, and the African American contribution to tourism has been well over, has been documented to be well over $60 billion domestically. To create an event of this sort means to attract more dollars into our own city, and that's what this event has been about. As part of the Cultural Affairs Department, we're fortunate to be part of that. I am a director with the Cultural Affairs Department, a whole neighborhood tourist initiative that we've been pushing. This is the epitome of that whole effort of pushing special events, whether it's the Fiesta Broadway or some of the other major festivals we do here in Los Angeles, to begin to look at those communities as being very key to attracting more dollars in our community by creating stronger relationships through our sister cities program with those events that are here. So Margie's been very helpful in helping us develop this process. This project has gone on to become one of the top 100 events in North America, twice it's been selected back in Washington, D.C. As you're probably aware of, now San Francisco has adopted the concept and will be, will be breaking ground in about 60 days on the construction of the first permanent Pan-African Marketplace and Cultural Fair and World Trade Center in the United States. We hope this project will go further and do the same thing. We've, we've brought some things we want to give you. The, yeah, okay, and we'll pass these out to you a little later. There's the posters from the Marketplace this year. These are from the African American Tourism Hospitality Council, which documents some of the different diversities in Los Angeles. It's a CD-ROM that we're passing out to hotels and convention people in Los Angeles. So again, the project's a little bit bigger than just an annual festival. So we hope you, again, to continue to support this project, sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. I believe we can now go through our agenda. Madam Clerk?
The First Order of Business Council calling of the roll. Cardenas, Garcetti, Grulhan, Labonge, Ludlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Ray Smith, Birigosa, Weiss, Sein, Padilla, 14 members present and a quorum, Madam President.
All right, we are in session.
And the First Order of Business is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weiss moves. Mr. Sein seconds. The minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Perry moves, and Mr. Ludlow seconds.
Madam President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
There are no public comment cards that have been submitted. They are all on items on the agenda, so we can proceed and close public comment.
Before proceeding with the agenda, there's a request to continue item number four for three weeks, and that would, excuse me, item number 54 for three weeks, and that would be to September 29th.
Members, request to continue item 54 for three weeks, seeing no objection. Item 54 is continued. Next item, please.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing. Items one and three are street lighting ordinances.
Okay, members, items one and three now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Members wishing to call either item special, one or three, seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item number two, there's a request from the Bureau of Street Lighting to continue that matter for 90 days, and that would be to December 10th.
Members, request to continue item number two. Without objection, item two is also continued. Next item.
Item number four is also a public hearing item, and I believe Mr. Ludlow has a request to continue that.
Mr. Ludlow?
Continue to September 26th.
To September 26th, two and a half weeks from today, seeing no objection. Item four is continued. Next item, please.
Next items are, excuse me, item number six is also a public hearing item. It's a public convenience or necessity in Council District Eight, and the recommendation is to deny without prejudice, and that requires a motion.
Mr. Labonge?
On behalf of Mr. Parks, I move that we deny without prejudice. Item number six.
Okay, members, we have a motion, item number six. Any requests to call this item special? If not, let's open the roll and the motion, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items seven through 28, an amended motion has been distributed on item number 24, and I believe there's also one in the process on item 26.
Okay, Mr. Garcetti?
28, please.
28, call special by Mr. Garcetti. Members, items seven through 28 have had public hearings in committee. A motion from the floor will be required to reopen the public hearings. I'm taking requests for specials.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Perry?
I want to call 17 and 20 special.
17 and 20. Call special by Ms. Perry. Mr. Ludlow?
18 special.
18, call special by Mr. Ludlow. Any other specials? Any other specials? Seeing none, let's open the roll and the balance of the items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And that includes items 24 and 26 as amended. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 29 through 54. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there are commissioners 29, 30, and 31.
Let's hold 29, 30, and 31 temporarily on the desk. These will be the first items we take up after dispensing with consent items on the balance of items 32 through 53. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials? Any specials on 32 through 53? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next item, Mr. President, would be item number 29, and that's confirmation of Mr. Vita Jenkins to the Quality and Productivity Commission.
Okay, will you come forward at this time, please? Members, consideration of this commission nominee has been held in committee, and we have Ms. Jenkins now in front of us. Thank you for being here. Do we have members of the council wishing to be heard on item 29? If not, we have a committee report recommending approval. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for serving the city. Next item, please.
Items 30 and 31 are also confirmations of commissioners to the Environmental Affairs Commission and Environment Equality and Waste Management Committee weighed consideration of these matters.
Okay, Ms. McLendon and Mr. Hill, please come forward. Let me recognize the chair of the Environmental Equality Committee, Ms. Perry.
I heartily recommend and endorse Ms. McLendon, and of course, Mr. Hill, too. But I, Ms. McLendon has a special place in my heart as she's not only Ninth District resident activist and continuing the legacy started by her late mother and executive director, Juanita Tate. She will do it in her own way, in her own style, and make her mark and carry us across the finish line on those projects that were started, but being very mindful of the importance of fighting as hard as we all do on behalf of the residents of South Los Angeles to remediate, to mitigate, and to improve our environment. And I look forward to working with her for many years to come.
Are there members wishing to be heard? Mr. Ludlow?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to rise in support of both nominations and glad to see Ms. McLendon here. On a personal note, I just wanted to say something about Mr. Hill. I've known him for a number of years, and a week or so ago, colleagues had a chance to talk to him on the phone, and I wanted to present him with something. His young son had to undergo surgery, and we're so thrilled that he's doing well. And so on behalf of the city council, we just wanted to give your son some good, get well wishes, and no young boy of his age should ever have to go through what he did. And we're so glad that he's doing well. So good luck on your new appointment, and we're glad you're going to be joining the city family.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
Mr. Raice?
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to thank you for your contribution to the city, your hard work. The environmental affairs, we talk about environmental justice. To me, it's a multi-pronged issue. For many folks, it's hard to see open space and good environmentally sensitive development as economic development. And so looking at the challenged areas of our city, we have such high densities, such high levels of poverty. The question I have is, when we have contracts with public works, you have the LAX master plan unfolding. Today, we're going to be reviewing Playa Vista. These all have environmental elements to it. In the environmental commission, do you see yourselves looking at this notion of economic development as it relates to safe environments? You look at the great work the tree people have been doing in capturing stormwater runoff, on how you begin to bring relief to areas that don't have trees, that don't have landscaping, don't have greenery. I just want to get from your point of view, any ideas, concepts, or your impressions about my assertions in dealing with the environment and how we bring a more balanced city?
I'm not sure how familiar you are with Concerned Citizens' history, but Concerned Citizens was founded as an environmental organization. And one of the reasons that the organization stayed together is that it recognized that the environment was more than just pollution. It is all of the things that go into it, including jobs, education, economic development. So there's a whole, there's a holistic approach to the environment as opposed to just looking at toxins that come into the air. There are things that the city does, for example, when you build a project, they are requiring street trees and things like that to help to improve the quality of the environment. And it's important that you look at the environment and economic development as a holistic or as a whole, as opposed to taking bits and pieces of it and saying, well, we can't build this because it may hurt the environment. You have to look at, weigh all things and all aspects of economic on how you begin to bring relief to areas that don't have trees, that don't have landscaping, don't have greenery. I just want to get from your point of view, any ideas, concepts, or your impressions about my assertions in dealing with the environment and how we bring a more balanced city?
First, I'm not sure how familiar you are with Concerned Citizens' history, but Concerned Citizens was founded as an environmental organization and one of the reasons that the organization stayed together is that it recognized that the environment was more than just pollution. It is all of the things that go into it, including jobs, education, economic development. So, there's a whole, there's a holistic approach to the environment as opposed to just looking at toxins that come into the air. There are things that the city does, for example, when you build a project, they are requiring street trees and things like that to help to improve the quality of the environment. And it's important that you look at the environment and economic development as a holistic or as a whole as opposed to taking bits and pieces of it and saying, well, we can't build this because it may hurt the environment. You have to look at, weigh all things and all aspects of economic development as a whole before you can make a determination. And as a commissioner, I would look at all of the factors involved, including trees and open space, which are really important to our organization and to the citizens of the City of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
For the last eighteen years, I've worked with the state legislature and the environment's been one of the most important issues I've worked on, along with education and healthcare reform. And I've been a member of this community all my life, so the economic growth is very important, but environmental justice issues and things like that are also important to me. So, as the community grows, we have to be not just economically viable, but we have to be healthy and safe and I want to make sure that the residents and the employees of the city are put in that sort of situation.
I put forth a motion some time ago, maybe about a year, year and a half, where I asked the city to look at green rooftops, to start looking at new developments so that, like in Tokyo, all new buildings have to have green rooftops. When you look at a photo shot from satellite, there's a red spot over Tokyo because it's very hot. There is minimal greenery. And Los Angeles is beginning to turn red. And green rooftops have a healing effect, if you will. But it also talks about how you bring relief to very congested areas. Once you get started as commissioners, perhaps we can look at that ordinance, we'll check to see where Public Works and Planning Department is on that ordinance, and perhaps put together the kind of business support where it's not viewed as just another requirement or another hoop for developers, but a way in which you look at relief. Because we have to think about what's going to happen to the city ten, fifteen, twenty years from now. And I think green rooftops would be one of the elements we can bring into our culture as we continue to evolve as a city, so I look forward to working with you on that. Again, thank you for your hard work and all your past contributions.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Are there members wishing to be heard or ask questions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on confirmation. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations, you're both approved. Thank you for serving the city. Madam Clerk forthwith, please, on twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number thirty-three was adopted previously, however, there is an amending motion. Do you wish to reconsider that matter so the amending motion can be adopted?
Let's open the roll in reconsideration for item thirty-three, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Item thirty-three is reconsidered and members, an amending motion has been distributed. There's no objection. Let's reopen the roll on item thirty-three as amended, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item number five, that was called special for cards from the public.
Item number five now before us and the council calls forward Robert Akavon and Jim McQuiston at this time.
I'm Robert Akavon. I own two apartment buildings side by side on corner of Vista Del Mar and Yucca Street. These buildings have, the cul-de-sac in question is directly in front of these buildings and there's absolutely no other adjacent property owners or any properties around this cul-de-sac, it's only our building. This cul-de-sac has been used for past decade for a safe haven for homeless, for drug dealers, for gang prostitution, has been a nightmare for our buildings. We had control over one building, we purchased the building about two and a half, about four years ago and we have adjusted the overall cleanup of the buildings, getting rid of the gang members, getting, cleaning up the drug dealers, it has taken about two and a half years, two years. At this point, we have the support of council for a temporary closure that has made a huge difference in that crime activity and we are thankful for it. What we are applying right now is for the permanent vacation of this cul-de-sac, be able to permanently control this area. We have had support from the police department, we have had police from the council people. Caltrans has also been very supportive of our activities. We have blocked off portions of the Caltrans with fencing that we paid for and we have controlled crime for past a year or so. So, we are making a major impact in beautifying and creating a safe area for Hollywood area and creating more housing for that particular area of Vine, Yucca, Franklin, that area that is very congested. We are, we have police officer here that in case it's needed can testify that the crime has reduced quite a bit by controlling that area of the cul-de-sac.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Jim McQuiston?
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. As you know, I'm a great supporter of this city council. I think you guys are really terrific. But there is one problem here. No one in this area, there is a hundred and fifty people to notify, got notified. So, they don't know that this is a vacation, number one. The only notification went out to the applicant and to CD four, but this is in CD thirteen. How about that? The problem is that Mr. Akavon has generated a problem here. He has invited this non-standard operation. The actual police report says that the reason that people are attracted is because of his boarded-up building attracting maybe possible dope dealers, maybe possible dope dealers. It doesn't really say that there's really the criminal activity that is required to close a street. On the other hand, the residents in this area and the people who come to the businesses depend on this cul-de-sac and many other cul-de-sacs to actually come and visit this area. And as a longtime resident, I've lived right across the street from this for forty years, I can testify that there was never any activity of the level that is there now until Mr. Akavon started destroying the neighborhood. So, we don't believe that the city should reward a person for destroying a neighborhood by giving them a donation of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars and that's what this property is worth. Instead, we think it ought to be returned to the neighborhood. Now, there is a Saint Stephen's Church, which is right down the street on Yucca and they have more problems because of Mr. Akavon than he does. And they own that whole block, so they could close off Yucca Street with the same kind of idea. And there are many other cul-de-sacs, you all have them next to your freeways. We could start a great domino effect by starting these closures, but we all have to look at these older neighborhoods where there are no places to park and we want to say, do people want to live there? If people don't want to live there, that's when we start getting the criminal element in. So, we really have to make...
Jim, if I can ask you to conclude, please?
We really have to maintain these cul-de-sacs for the neighborhoods and get after the people who are running down the neighborhoods instead.
Thank you. This concludes public comment for this item. Members wishing to be heard on item number five, Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. If I can invite Maria Glazade, who is our senior lead officer up, I'd like to ask you a few questions and thank you for being here today, Maria. Can you kind of give us a little bit of a rundown of what the criminal situation is and your take on what's causing that? And I know there's been two sides of the story here and kind of where you think this vacation fits into that and whether it would be a positive or arguably, one side says it would be a positive step, the other one says it's rewarding bad behavior. What's been your take as the senior lead officer there?
Well, I can testify to my experience in the Hollywood area and I've been an officer for twelve years and the last five have been in Hollywood. As a senior lead officer specifically, this is in my area. I can testify that before Mr. Akavon took over the, or sort of adopted the area, I've made numerous arrests on that cul-de-sac and the freeway area that's adjacent to that cul-de-sac for drug paraphernalia, transient encampments, prostitution, and runaways. And it was chronically complained of location. It was a location that was known as a dumping ground for couches, mattresses, abandoned anything and was a, an area that the patrol officers consistently had to address in keeping it clean and we were losing the battle in a lot of respects. But since the adoption, the area has improved. I don't receive any more complaints. I can't remember the last time I received a complaint from that area, including the freeway side. And it's no longer a dumping ground because the area's gated off and it's considerably improved.
There's a letter of support here from Captain Downing from the Hollywood Division. He's supportive of this vacation, is that correct?
Yes, he is.
Okay. And in terms of the activity, how much of it had been because of the, just the dead end or because of the building itself next door being kind of boarded up and stuff? Is that something that attracted any of the problems in the past?
My experience, the arrests that I specifically made and the incidences that I know of were due to the cul-de-sac and the ability for the transients and the criminals to secrete themselves with the fencing of the freeway constantly being broken in the cul-de-sac. It wasn't so much, I never made any arrests out of the building, but I did make numerous arrests out of the cul-de-sac and the freeway side, Caltrans.
This, I think tomorrow, we're actually doing a, Sergeant, is it Weaver, doing the big initiative tomorrow?
Ventura, Sergeant Ventura.
Ventura, sorry, why did I call him Weaver? Just saw him yesterday. Sergeant Ventura is doing a sweep in the kind of East Hollywood area with, coordinated with a number of our departments, Building and Safety and others to look at some of these encampment areas, offer services to folks who are homeless, but also go after properties and other things that are bringing down the neighborhood and attracting crime. Is this an area where one of those sort of projects you think would be well-received as well and that it could use the help?
Well, actually, we're going to hit...
We're going to get all the way up to the freeway?
Well, no, on the next project, with this, this initial project that we're starting tomorrow led by Sergeant Ventura will address the East Hollywood area and just saturate it with officers and city entities. And then the following month, we're going to do another one that will encompass my area as well, so.
Okay. That was just as a side note and I really appreciate Sergeant Ventura's leadership and all the good work of the folks that have been planning that. You know, we could go two ways with this, there's something else, and thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
We could look at the Neighborhood Council, I know there's been some dispute about whether Neighborhood Council supports, doesn't support. We could either hold off until that is resolved for a couple of weeks. It would be nice to have the Neighborhood Council weigh in definitively one way or another, or we could pass this today and reconsider it if that information changes in the next, you know, day or two, but I know with Neighborhood Councils the way they are. I would propose right now at least an initial check-in. They may not be able to weigh in definitively, but I'd like to at least check in with the head of the Neighborhood Council and I would propose then continuing this till Friday. I know you've been on a two and a half year journey with this and I appreciate what Mr. McQuiston brought up too and I know there's an urgency, at least we're fenced off right now, so we're okay. And I do give you my word, we will resolve this as soon as possible, but I just want to make sure that that gets worked out, at least talk to the leadership of Neighborhood Council to understand what it was that they were either confused about or did in fact want to weigh in on. So, there's no objection and I thank everybody for their time and I will obviously try to let you know about this beforehand, all the parties that were involved today, so that you don't have to come down to City Hall again if that's the case. I would propose that we continue this till Friday.
Is there an objection to continuance to this Friday? Seeing none, this item is then continued. And before proceeding to the next item, Mr. Labange, do you want to introduce a very special visitor?
Well, Mr. President, let's give Mr. President, Mr. Padilla, a big hand right now for that great pick. The reason why I say that, it's this time of season where quarterbacks get behind their center and able to read defenses. Well, he read me real well because he saw me greet one of the great Californians, Dr. Kevin Starr. Kevin, come up here, give him a big hand right now. And he's got a distinguished guest right here with us. We're taking my three minutes for the rest of the day, I won't speak on anything else, fellas. Okay.
Thank you. I have with me Mr. Bernard Henry Levy, the great French writer, who's done over thirty books. His most recent book was a book on Daniel Pearl. He's a sort of combination of a great intellectual and a great rock star and he's doing a book now on Los Angeles, so I have the privilege of bringing him around this great city. And these are distinguished elected officials who make this city run and Mr. Bernard Henry Levy, this is the city council of Los Angeles.
Yeah, welcome. Thank you very much for welcoming me here in this beautiful city and this marvelous hall. I never saw, I think, in Europe such a city hall like this. So, America is still in advance, I see. And I'm really very glad to be here and with such a guide, a Mr. Kevin Starr, who is teaching me all the mysteries and the secrets of this beautiful city. So, if you don't mind, we shall stay a few minutes here to listen, to see how things are working in this democratic assembly, which Tocqueville already described a long time ago, not about Los Angeles, but about other cities in this country.
Mr. President, thank you very much. Welcome to Los Angeles.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number seventeen was called special by Councilmember Perry.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is a resolution in support of young people who are incarcerated and in the central jail and the conditions under which they are held and that we need to address those. So, this is basically a resolution in support of human rights and watching and advocating on behalf of these juveniles to make sure that they continue to receive an education. Human Rights Watch, a group discovered that in the Los Angeles County Men's Central Jail, young people are limited to three visits a week by a teacher for five to fifteen minutes. And if we want people to serve their time and recover and become contributing members to society, we have to make sure that they receive the basics, whether they're in jail or not in jail, but particularly in jail where they are often preyed upon and subjected to major sexual and physical abuses and are twice as likely to be beaten or assaulted than the adult inmates. And in many cases, some of the young people have been locked in windowless single cells for almost twenty-four hours a day and I think we need to give some recognition to this issue and to at least support the efforts of the Human Rights Watch group in making sure that minors continue to be educated and live in, or not live, but are incarcerated in humane conditions. And so, I hope that I can enjoy your support today on this.
Other members wishing to be heard on item seventeen, seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, just to let council know, on item number twenty-six, it was adopted and there was no amending motion, so that was just adopted as was stated on the agenda.
Okay, thank you for clarifying the record.
And the next item then would be number eighteen and that was called special by Councilmember Ferraro. Excuse me, Councilmember Labange.
This was for Labange.
Okay, well, let's proceed to the next item and...
He's here.
Oh, there he is, he's ready. From the Great Forest District in the City of Los Angeles.
We talk about wildlife all the time and we know we had a challenge with our budget. Those of us who are honored to serve on the City Council, wherever we are, have a challenge of wildlife. In fact, just recently, as two nights ago, not, almost as close as Janice Hahn is to my microphone, right now, were three wonderful but intruding raccoons in our backyard. And the other day, a coyote ran across the back of my backyard, beautiful tail. I talked to my old college professor. September is the month where coyotes come out, the water's dry. The deep, deep challenge that we have is on wildlife. A man up in, up in San, in the San Gabriel Mountains at Chaleo Fats, just this last Labor Day weekend, was attacked by a bear. A bear was, and it wasn't Dennis Hahn, a bear was in a hot tub in Calabasas just recently. All this took place, all this took place and at the same time, our challenges related to wildlife and the wildlife officers was severely challenged because those positions were depleted. Members, what's before you is efforts of work and I thank Ms. Miskowski for her efforts in helping and others in this to reinstate these positions at part-time and then come back, hopefully the mid-year adjustment with full-time positions. And we need them now because... And we need them now because there are even reports of coyotes on Terminal Island, which is an amazing feat to think that they could move so far across the city, the county. So Commander is here just to give us a brief report, and many, many constituents of ours has spoken to our office, and I'm sure yours, about the need to have wildlife officers and their focus in training. Commander David, and I want to pronounce it correctly, David—
DeLaBerto.
DeLaBerto, is here from Animal Services. Could you turn up his microphone, please? Thank you.
I basically believe that what's before you is a good compromise to fill the gap until the mid-year budget. Councilman LeBonde is correct. Every Saturday, I run up at Griffith Park, and this past Saturday, right at the corner of Riverside and Las Feliz, right at about six-thirty in the morning, I saw a coyote basically following a jogger right up the main street. And I pulled my personal car over to sort of cut the coyote off, to sort of get him a little distracted, so the person with the backpack could continue on. But what flashed through my mind at that time was, this is one of the reasons why we need wildlife officers, because here's a coyote right in broad daylight, trotting after somebody. But I believe what's before you is a good compromise. We are assigning our wildlife officers three days a week, part-time, to handle strictly wildlife work. And the other days, they can fill in and assist as we need out at the shelters.
Commander, I appreciate that. I appreciate the mayor's interest in this as well. It's something that we unfortunately overlooked, but now we're looking straight at it. And members, I ask for an eye vote as we reinstate the wildlife officer program in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonde. I have a good solution to that problem, and that's the wildlife officers that help control the wildlife. I know in my district, just this Saturday, I saw a dead raccoon at the intersection of Fallbrook, just south of Victory, lying in the gutter. And that's a heavily populated area, and I know how raccoons can be very aggressive and very dangerous. This issue came up at a meeting we had at Pierce College where you and your representatives were there, and we're forming a task force, members of the community, and the individuals who want to protect the wildlife or not kill the wildlife and coexist with the people that live in the populated areas, which is all of Los Angeles. So I'm a strong supporter of this. I've seen the same situation you referred to with a coyote basically stalking an individual. We see what's happened with the wildlife as we keep encroaching more and more on their territory. They become more and more desperate. And with the heat, they're looking for water, they're coming into backyards. So whether it's a bear, or a coyote, or a mountain lion, or something, we need to maintain this. We have encroached upon their area, we're not going to get rid of them, and we somehow have to coexist. So I know the wildlife program has been very beneficial, and your department has been very responsible with the limited resources that you have in place to address that continuing saga of people saying, "We need to do something about it." And I understand, and years ago, we used to have a relocation program with Animal Services. Do we still have a relocation program with wildlife that are causing a threat to the community?
The wildlife program that we used to have never encompassed, for instance, coyotes, which is the biggest threat that we have.
What did we do with coyotes? What did we used to do?
We used to trap them and kill them.
Okay. They weren't relocated?
No, sir.
Okay. What about relocation of other animals?
Well, for years, we did have an airlift where we took—it was mostly opossums and raccoons via helicopter up to various desolate locations and let them go. While it was a good PR thing, it was sort of technically questionable in terms of state law. State law requires that any animal that we trap or pick up either be released back to the location where it was or within basically a quarter of a mile or so of that location. So we really can't relocate them far away like we used to in the old days.
And you mentioned possum. It just flashes that last week, I turned a light on in my backyard, and there was a possum. And this is a heavily populated residential area with a possum in the backyard, and I've seen they're very unsightly, shall we say. They look like a big rat, but I understand they will attack you.
Opossums are really the most common type of wildlife we have in this city. You can find them in the most industrial areas because they're scavengers. A possum really is an aggressive animal, but just like any wild animal, when it's cornered, or a lot of times, people will try and—because they do play possum, they do freeze, they don't—you know, they play dead, and people will approach them or try and touch them or do something with them. And at that point, like any other wild animal, it's fight or flight. If they can't get away and they feel scared, then yes, they will bite you, and they have quite a few pinpoint sharp teeth that they can. But historically, they're not going to come after a person, a cat, a dog. They're going to show you their teeth, they're going to hiss, they're going to drool, or they're going to play dead, or they're going to run away if they can.
Well, I turned off the light and went to sleep, so I hope it ended up okay. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members wishing to be heard, seeing none. Let me just add on behalf of my constituents, because I know they're watching from home, if this is approved, and I have a feeling it will be, we need some patrols out at Cary Ranch, because coyotes don't just come out on trash day. So you can put that on the list of areas to check. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A fourth with on all fours, two this item.
Fourth with.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Next item, please.
Item number twenty, called special by Councilmember Perry.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I believe there are two-speaker cards, but before they come to the podium, I wanted to just bring up a few very important points about Prop 63. And I think we're all very, very familiar with the challenges that the people who live and serve and provide services on Skid Row face, and I think this is why this one in particular is so special, in my opinion. Proposition 63 will raise $750 million and fund new and expanded county mental health programs, with most funding allocated for services to children, adults, and seniors who have mental illnesses and who need services. And I know all of you, I'm sure, share the concern that, number one, Skid Row is not a place for children, and yet the population of children and their parents is increasing in the Skid Row area. In the LA County, the Department of Mental Health currently has seventeen hundred consumers enrolled in their successful Adult System of Care AB2034 program, which contracts with nineteen community and private agencies and provides mental health services. A program like this would be expanded significantly with this funding. This kind of a program provides critical services, including benefits assistance, advocacy, case management, and housing placement. The successes of a program like this are excellent throughout the county, where one-third of all the participants in the state are enrolled. Proposition 63 will begin to address the critical mistake that was made over twenty-five years ago, when the state of California closed mental hospitals and drastically reduced services for persons suffering from mental illness. And if you all remember a time when there were not a lot of homeless people on the street, and then all of the sudden, the streets were inundated with people who were homeless and unable to care for themselves. This year alone, mental health services dollars were reduced by thirty million in Los Angeles County due to budget constraints, and this critical shortfall is evident with a number of homeless people on our streets, just in downtown alone. The increase in our homeless shelters, and of course, many of the people there are suffering from mental illness. Jails and emergency rooms are not the place to intervene and assist people who are homeless or mentally ill. We need intervention programs, supportive housing, and supportive services. According to the state's legislative analysts last year, Prop 63 could result in the state and counties receiving more than one hundred million in additional Medi-Cal funds. In addition, the LAO's office estimated that there would be a potential of annual savings in the hundreds of millions of dollars, because we will save on emergency room costs, social service costs, homeless shelters, and more. So for those of you who believe that we should approach a problem on the front end, this is the way to do it. The county has been working successfully with the city in working on mental health with three of their contractors, Portals, Sharp, and the San Fernando Valley Mental Health Agency, to outreach at several of our continuously operated shelters to enroll people in the Adult System of Care program. The people who are enrolled are getting quickly into permanent housing, and I believe are permanently ending their homelessness through LA's Hope. This kind of a grant is being jointly administered by the city's Community Development Department and the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles. We need more resources to get people out of homelessness. This is a pathway to do that, so that—I hope you will join me today after hearing our two speakers in supporting Proposition 63. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Public hearing has been held in committee, but Ms. Perry moves reopening the public hearing, seeing no objection. If we can put up a five-minute clock, please, and hear from Chad Costello, Ruth Schwartz, Natalie Profant-Cumuro, and Carolyn Baker.
Thank you, Councilwoman Perry, members of the City Council. My name is Chad Costello. I come here wearing two hats, one as the president-elect of the California Coalition for Mental Health, and another as a staff person from the National Mental Health Association of Greater Los Angeles. Up until I was drafted to work on the passage of Prop 63 last week, I supervised a case management team at the Village ISA in Long Beach, and I can speak firsthand as to the difference of type of services that would be funded by Prop 63, making the lives of homeless adults who live with psychiatric disabilities. AB34-style programs, like the one I came from, work because they recognize that people get better when you help them get a life. Housing, education, healthcare, jobs, reunification with their families, and, most importantly, a normal role in the community. That's great news for the four hundred and seventy-five adults served by the Village and the seventeen hundred or so served in LA County, and the five thousand statewide. But there are estimates that there are another forty-five to fifty thousand people statewide who would qualify for these services if only funding were available. That's about fifteen thousand in Los Angeles County. Prop 63 would not only permit those individuals to benefit from these services, it would provide preventive services to children and young adults, and wraparound services to older adults. In addition to the cost savings with emergency rooms, hospitalizations, and incarceration, the savings on the human toll from the people who suffer from these illnesses and their families is great. Those of us who work in these programs know that recovery from mental illness is possible. Passage of Prop 63 will make it probable for those here in Los Angeles, and ask for your support. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ruth Schwartz Shelter Partnership. I just want to thank Councilwoman Jan Perry and Councilwoman Vericosa for introducing this motion, and also the leadership of State Senator Steinberg. I mean, this is critically—I mean, we look at a lot of programs, and I want to tell you that nationally, this is recognized as the most ambitious, the best program of all state practices. And our county is doing a great job of implementing it. People's lives are being saved every day, and this is a great program. I hope all of you will have an opportunity to see its impact. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Natalie Profant-Cumuro with the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority. Earlier this summer, the LSA Commission voted to endorse Proposition 63, the Mental Health Services Act. As a joint powers authority created by the city and county of Los Angeles, LSA plans for new ministers funding for homeless programs in most of Los Angeles County. Approximately eighty thousand people are homeless on any given night in Los Angeles County, and about half of those are in the city of Los Angeles. Approximately fifteen thousand homeless people countywide are estimated to have a serious mental illness, and thousands more require temporary mental health services. Yet we have just thirty-one hundred units of permanent supportive housing for people with disabilities. Because of the lack of mental health services, homeless persons with chronic and serious mental illness place a tremendous burden on other systems of care. They are frequently arrested and hospitalized at great expense and without gaining any meaningful improvement in their condition. Left on the streets, they live in unspeakable conditions that are often dangerous and nearly always unsanitary. The toll on their health can be further exacerbated by the use of illegal and addictive drugs. Just a few weeks ago, the Los Angeles County Department of Mental Health announced that their budget would be cut by thirty million dollars this year. The structural funding crisis underlying this decision is all too clear. Without Proposition 63, we can look forward to continued funding cuts in the face of rising costs and growing need. Yes, these are difficult populations to serve, and it can take years to develop enough of a relationship with a person to take the next step. But our greatest barrier is the lack of funding to make more services available. The people we see on the street are the legacy of years of insufficient funding. Proposition 63 would reverse this trend. On behalf of LSA, I respectfully request that the City Council join our commission in endorsing Proposition 63 and do everything in its power to help ensure its passage. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Baker.
Thank you, Councilwoman Perry and members of the council. My name is Carolyn Baker, and I'm representing the National Alliance for the Mentally Ill. We've been waiting for Proposition 63 for over twenty-five years. There's not a family in Los Angeles whose life is not touched by mental illness. So on behalf of the parents, the siblings, the partners, and the friends who comprise NAMI, I bring you our story of the emotional toll of quietly walking this heartbreaking road and the crushing financial burden of carrying the load of a broken mental health system. It's time for government to step up and address this. Proposition 63 will expand mental health services to tens of thousands of children and adults that are not accessing the medical care that is their right. It's time to give our families and our loved ones the help and the hope for which we've so long been waiting. Thank you.
Thank you. This once again concludes public comment for this item. Mr. Vericosa.
Yes, I want to thank Councilmember Perry for putting this motion forward. When you think about mental health in California and remember another era in the nineteen-fifties, in many ways, this is a city—this is a state that has gone backward. The services that we provide for mental health in this state and in this country, frankly, pale in comparison to what other Western industrialized nations do. For both Ms. Perry and myself, homelessness is ground zero in downtown in the fourteenth and the ninth council manic districts. And we know that although there are many problems associated and many root causes associated with the homeless, one of them is this issue of the lack of mental health services that are be provided by the state and the county. We know that it takes money, and that many of us who sit on the Blue Ribbon Commission have said that at the end of the day, no matter what the recommendations are, if they don't have money associated with them, a revenue stream to provide the services that we need, we will never really, truly address this problem. It would just be rhetoric. And so this is an effort for us to take a leadership role as a council, to stand up and say that this state must commit itself to the idea that mental health is a very, very important initiative, that providing expanded mental health programs for children and adults, the counseling and care that they need, offering the services to persons and families without insurance, creating a children's services effort targeted to those not covered by existing programs is the kind of effort that we need to see in this state. We can generate in a few years up to eight hundred million dollars for these services, money that we don't have currently, money that neither the city, the county, nor the state can provide as we currently provide our programs. And so I stand in support of this measure and in support of the idea that this is a small price to pay for the benefits and the savings that would be derived for passing this mental health initiative. I urge your eye vote.
Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla, and want to acknowledge as well Ms. Perry for introducing this motion, and thank our speakers, many of which who I have worked with for now decades on the issue of homelessness and particularly mental illness. And as Mr. Vericosa said, this is something that is—been around with deinstitutionalization that created so much of our homeless problem. And the numbers vary from twenty-five, forty, fifty percent of the individuals who are homeless on the street are mentally ill. So I want to stand in support of Ms. Perry's motion to support Proposition 63, which I think will help us in the state of California to provide the desperately needed services for those individuals who are homeless. We've all seen them. We have all interacted with them and feel a little bit probably helpless in our ability to reach out to them and provide the services that are necessary. So its time has come, and I also want to recognize some of the member Steinberg, who has taken a leadership role on this issue, and support the motion before us today.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I too rise to acknowledge and support my colleagues on this effort. Colleagues, I'm not sure if you've been—I'm sure you have—observing how when folks with mental illness are finding ways to feed themselves, have something to drink, water sometime during the day, and you're beginning to see large numbers of folks with shopping carts. folks with shopping carts, filling baskets with empty bottles and cans, and you're seeing them more and more in our residential streets. You see them going through our recycling blue cans. And it's almost like if we're allowing this sub-economy, this condition to continue to grow in our streets. So it's important that we support this kind of effort, because, true, downtown is ground zero, but as you start looking at all the different neighborhoods that have these recycling centers, the folks are doing what they can to survive. You see them going through the parks. So it's a multi-level issue, but we see it more and more every day in our neighborhoods. So I would hope that the folks who are listening can understand the significance of supporting this issue, because we really have relegated thousands of people to a level of subsistence that echoes the Dickensian areas, eras, where folks were just left to survive on bare minimum standards. And I would hope that we continue to push with these kinds of efforts. But it is spreading throughout the city. It is not just one area, and for that reason, we should fight hard to make this happen. So I want to thank Councilmember Perry and Veragosa for bringing this to our attention, and hopefully folks can understand the significance of this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Unanimous approval. Next item, please.
Item number twenty-eight, called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is for legislative program colleagues, not for this year, but for this coming year now. The legislative program is coming to a close, so it isn't for this right away. But looking at next year, I wanted to just cite this, because we're talking about trying to get Caltrans to give up some of the right-of-ways that they have to in this case. I know we're also dealing with the same thing on Highland as well, where the state doesn't have the resources and has neglected many times these main right-of-ways, Glendale Boulevard, Highland Avenue, which technically are still state routes. And in the old days, they really were kind of state highways, but now they are urban streets. And as we look at our ability to improve those streets, whether it's the intersection over at Highland and Franklin, that I know Mr. Labange and I are working on, sometimes those are held up because the state still has jurisdiction. They don't have the ability to put any money into those projects, but at the same time, they say we have the authority, so it has to come through us. And we really want to urge the state to do all that it can to essentially give up the responsibility. It should be a relief off of their backs. Should be a thing where unless people want control for the sake of control, there's no need to continue to have what are urban streets be part of the freeway or the highway system. So, excuse me, I urge your support on this today. It's something that throughout the city, I know, is an issue in other districts as well. But as we look at this, we should really try to tie these together in as much of a package as we can in some of these right-of-ways, so that our DOT can get in there, our street services can get in there. And the state should give us the money that they have set aside for these. We'll do the improvements. We can do them quickly, and then we can really give the neighbors the improvements, and the businesses the improvements that they deserve. So it's the only reason I call it special, to just cite that. Thank you.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you, Eric. And I know we share a lot of this area too, and well, in Hollywood. The one challenge, as you said, it's, they were at one time state routes, long before the freeway system was developed, and then they were once proposed to be freeways. The traffic is there, though, and it's how that we deal with it. This morning, the traffic on that freeway was backed up bumper-to-bumper stop north of the Golden State Freeway. And I know some in the community think just because its designation goes away means traffic will go away. I think that all it does is give us an opportunity to mitigate the traffic better, better for the community, and also in peak hours, so it flows safely through the community there, so that there are opportunities to try to make it safe for the community. But the traffic will still be, remain there. One of the biggest challenges, not just in this part of Los Angeles that we share, but in other parts, is where the freeway system was never completed, and yet you have this cause that is going. Because to go from the San Gabriel Valley to Hollywood or West Los Angeles, there's only really two routes, Alvarado into the Wilshire area, or Los Feliz in through the northern part of Hollywood area. And in between is Silver Lake and Hyperion. All those are not nearly capable of handling any of that traffic. So I look forward to working with you on that. But I think we have to be realistic to the communities that we serve, that just because we take their designation away, it doesn't mean traffic's got to stop. It just gives an opportunity to the city to control and manage it a little better. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other members wishing to be heard on item twenty-eight? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Smith requests to be excused Wednesday, September 15th, for personal business that meets council policy.
Mr. Smith is excused.
Councilmember Labange requests to be excused Tuesday, September 28th, for city business that meets council policy.
Mr. Labange is excused.
And Councilmember Ludlow requests to be excused Wednesday, October 6th, for city business that also meets council policy.
That excuse is granted.
Yeah, Mr. President, was that Tuesday and Wednesday, and the weekend, September, or just Tuesday?
Just the Tuesday.
The 20th?
28th.
Oh, 28th, okay.
Do you need both days?
No, I'm okay. I believe so. But am I excused the week before? This is a water conference that I'm focused on. But I'll get back to the clerk on that. Mr. President, I ask that we could reconsider an item we handled yesterday. It was a special event motion. That we have clarification from the CLA's office.
Which item number?
Reconsider item number eighty.
Okay, let's open the roll on a reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen.
Members, this is item eighty from yesterday's agenda.
It's being distributed now. It's for the
Is this a substitute motion?
Substitute motion for the Park LeBrea Arts and USC. Thank you, Avak. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Okay, there's no further discussion. With that objection, we'll consider this substitute motion. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, Madam Clerk?
And the desk is clear.
Okay, members, this is the end of our agenda. Do we have any announcements today? Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you. Colleagues, earlier today, there was a pronouncement, a proclamation of Workforce Literacy Day in the city of Los Angeles, and in a pretty unprecedented partnership called Literacy at Work of more than 100 different literacy organizations in Los Angeles, released through the United Way their plan this morning for workforce literacy here in a county where 4 million people need literacy skills, here in a city where 11% of the people who live here don't even have a sixth-grade education, working with parents and their children to increase our literacy skills to provide the jobs for tomorrow. So if you're interested in finding out about, more about that, go to the United Way's website. Mayor declared it today, and we had a big summit with hundreds of people at USC. It's Workforce Literacy Day, and hopefully we put together a five-year plan to actually move us to coordinating some of the disparate programs that are out there and doing a better job. So wanted to let everybody know about it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Labange?
Mr. Veragosa, our mayor and his great wisdom has opened the pools up not only just this weekend, but next weekend. So I remind it all who are listening, our city pools under the direction of John Marbury and his staff, and the city lifeguards who have an opportunity for, one, to swim for free. Any child in Los Angeles can swim for free. And our city pools that Mayor Hahn has opened them up through next weekend, not just this one, but the following weekend. Gives an opportunity for people to come and enjoy our pools at this heat wave that is, summer has finally come to Los Angeles. So visit one of the 67 Los Angeles pools and enjoy. Take a child, a grandchild, and enjoy the Los Angeles City pools.
I think the children of Chatsworth are particularly happy about that. Was it 105 yesterday? It's hot out there. Any other announcements? Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to make an announcement about Clean Sweep Day, sponsored by L.A. Bridges and Carver Middle School, Saturday, September the 11th, starting at 9:00 a.m. And this will be a day of remembrance for our fallen heroes by helping the community to beautify the surrounding Carver Middle School area. There will be music, food, and fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Other final announcements? Do we have any adjournment motions today? Please rise for adjourned tributes. Adjournment motions. Mr. Labange?
Members, Axel DeMuller, who was a very prominent attorney with the Motion Picture Association, was on summer holiday and took ill unfortunately. He was with his two sons. He was in Mexico. On the way to the hospital, unfortunately, he had a accident, or either had a major seizure and passed. He was just 50 years old. He had two very nice young boys who were tragically back at the hospital, excuse me, back at the hotel, and only to find out later. He is a dear friend of our Rosemary Rice, who's the chair of our Berlin Citro City Committee. Members, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Axel Delanin Muller, who was a very spirited, spirited person, and also a great lawyer for interstate commerce and copyright law for the Motion Picture Association.
Mr. Ludlow?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Christopher Ryan Johnson. Christopher was murdered this morning around 1:00 a.m. in my district, a young 25-year-old gentleman. He had just been at 7-Eleven and was riding his bike about two blocks back to his home, and he was hit several times by a suspect in a car. I spent a little bit of time out on the scene with his mother and his two brothers. And just amazing tragedy. Went to Fairfax High School, and went on, worked on a computer science degree, and really trying to turn his life around, and running into troubles here and there. But never was giving up on himself, and his mother sure wasn't. His brother, who's 16, is having his first day at school today, at high school. And we're standing out there in the cold of the night, and his mother was asking him if he wanted to stay home, and he said, no, Chris would want me to be at school today. And so he is going to school. Just wanted to ask that we adjourn in his memory. His mother is longtime employee at Kaiser West LA, longtime member of West Angeles Church, and also attending Crenshaw Christian Center. And I think it's fitting that enlighten some of the things that the media might like to do with things that we do here in these chambers. If a member of this chamber wants to talk about homicides, and wants to talk about what we can do to stem this violence, I can tell you that this morning, there's a family that would not argue with that motion at all.
Other tributes? Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Jesus Chui Cordero. He passed away on August 18th, 2004. Unfortunately, he was run over by a vehicle on Main Street in Lincoln Heights. Jesus Cordero lived in Lincoln Heights for over 30 years. He was born in August 23rd, 1926, just days away from his 78th birthday. He was a great husband, father, grandfather, great-grandfather, and friend. He'll be tremendously missed by his family, friends, the entire neighborhood. He leaves behind his wife, Carmela Marquez Cordero, three daughters and three sons, many grandkids and great-grandkids. My condolences to the family and friends, Mr. Jesus Chui Cordero.
Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. Request adjourn in memory of Mary T. Jennings, married, passed away August 25th. She was a longtime resident of Woodland Hills, member of the Woodland Hills Republican Women's Federated, where she was the sunshine girl, making others smile when they had difficulties. She enjoyed gardening, was a member of the garden club for 20 years. She was the first native-born American in her family, and was very proud of her Irish heritage. She survived by her son, Tom Jennings', daughter Teresa, Terry Stewart, sisters Marguerite Newmeyer and Agnes Dukoff, grandchildren Marcie, Timothy, and Judy Jennings', Tyron, Brandon, Derek, Blake, Shane, and Brady Stewart, great-grandson Giovanni Jennings', daughter-in-law Deanna Jennings', and son-in-law Mike Stewart. May Mary T. Jennings rest in peace.
Final tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.